Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting on October the 14th. I would like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Elston for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you today, we just want to say thank you, Lord God, that you have afforded us the opportunity of life, health, and strength. Lord God, we ask for your wisdom. We thank you for wisdom and knowledge to do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We ask your continued blessings upon our mayor, upon our council, those who work for our city and live in our city. We thank you for the progress of our city. We thank you for what you've done, what you're doing, and the things that you are going to do. We continue to believe you, Lord God, for love, peace, and harmony, Lord God. And we just ask, Lord God, that you would guide us. The Scripture says that you know the way that we take. And so, we ask for your guidance, Lord God. We have your faith to call those things that be not as though they were. So, we say thank you, Lord God. We give you all the praise, the honor, and glory in Jesus' name. We pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meetings held on October the 7th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 3rd through October 9th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right. Item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Do we have any of those from the administration this morning? All right. I'd like to make a change, just a slight change, in our agenda this morning. Agenda item 16 is citizen request to speak, and Kevin Blackwell with the SPAN program is here this morning. In light of the crowd that you brought, and in light of some things coming up on our agenda, I don't want you guys to have to sit here all day to have to get up and speak. So, I'd like to go ahead and recognize you now, Kevin, if that's all right with you. And you can come forward, and we're glad to have you here. You're very nice to come give us an annual report, and every year, we look forward to hearing it. And it looks like you brought some of your friends with you, too.
I did, I did. At first, I was thankful for the opportunity to speak. You know, the mayor's not here but the council. And I did bring my top 10 students that are here today, and I did that for two reasons. Reason number one, I am in a building owned by the city, and I want the students to see your faces, because we couldn't have a SPAN program without your investment into the kids. I wanted to see that. And I also want you to see, when I come up every year and I give you numbers, that's kind of informal, when I just come up and I give you numbers. But I want you to recognize that there are faces to the numbers that I give you every single year. With that being said, last fiscal year, we served 103 students, which is a lot, because I only have a staff of four people. We serve eight middle schools, we serve eight high schools, with one of those being the six-day Gadsden City. We help when the JPO needs any help, and we also help with DHR when they have cases with these kids. That is a lot of kids. Out of those 103, 51 went back to school. Out of those 51, 49 went back in their correct grade. That is a big help for our cities, for our school systems, to put 49 kids back in their correct grade. When you put a kid back in their correct grade, that gives them a chance to graduate on time. Without the SPAN program, those are 51 kids who are going to be behind, and the school system has to figure out a way, what are they going to do with these kids? Us being around and your support helps us help those kids. We also had 10 students obtain their GED this past fiscal year, which is great. Now, you have a student, if you give him one piece of paper, that opens up the door to be able to have a better job and to be able to go to a college when you have that little piece of paper. Your program here in the state, there are seven SPAN programs. For the past seven years, we have been the top program with attendance, with return to school, and with GED. When I say the top program, the second program, we double them up in the state. That is how active we are in Gadsden when it comes to serving the kids. The kids that I have, you know, behind me, you know, each one are doing different things. You have some that are trying to get their GED, and you have some who are trying to go back to school in their correct grade. You know, we have been so popular, and sometimes, we get stuck with having so many kids. I'm only really technically, by my state boss, only supposed to have 15 kids inside the building at any given time, but I have 25 on row. The only good thing that came out of COVID for us was the ability that we did realize we could have a school online. So, we have kids who are actually doing online work. Some of those are young ladies with babies, and some are people who have jobs, who are helping trying to support their family. That's been helpful for us, so we actually have 25 students on row right now. If you have never visited our program, I encourage you to come by. This is 44 years we've been in Gadsden. If you've never seen what we do, I can't encourage you more to come by and see face-to-face what we're doing. I don't want you to think I'm just standing up here just giving you outrageous numbers. Come and see what you guys are investing in. This is the future. These are not kids that I throw away. These are not kids just discard and let them go by. When you hear "No Child Left Behind," we are No Child Left Behind. We are doing that every single day. And a lot of people in Gadsden don't realize what we're doing. We are unsung superheroes. That's how I look at us. I also have a young man who was willing, he's in the back, to be the student spokesperson if you have any questions.
Yeah, I'd like for him to come up to the microphone, and is it okay, Kevin? At some point, when we could get a picture?
I would love it.
Okay, we'll do that. We'd like to, usually we get him, Michael, we could do that, right? They could come up here in the front at the end of this. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, so you're the student spokesperson, right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
I was just going to say that y'all have invested in something great, and it's truly changed my life, because I went from getting removed from a school to getting back in this program, and this program has helped me a lot. This is my first time in this program, and the staff are amazing. The students I've talked to are amazing. It's a great program. It's boosted me, it's boosted my knowledge, and I'm very grateful for it.
It's outstanding. I enjoy seeing people, but young people especially, take advantage of what's out there, and maybe take advantage of a second or third chance. And I can't agree more that the program is outstanding. Mr. Blackwell comes every year and tells us numbers, like you said, Kevin, but seeing the faces and to hear the voices really puts a real personal touch to it. But very, very proud of what you guys are doing, very proud of each one of you. Takes a lot of courage to go back and maybe start something that you left or walked away from, and it takes courage to come in here and to be recognized. But we're certainly proud of the whole program, certainly proud of every student there, and very proud of the top 10. I think it's outstanding. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin, can we get him, can everybody come up here, this line up right in front of this, right here, and we'll get a picture?
Absolutely.
And we'll put that on our social media and website and things?
I'll go up front. You go ahead.
Yeah, just come right up here. Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
Proud of you.
Keep going.
All right. Good morning. Proud of you.
What's that?
All right. Proud of you.
I should thank you, too. Go ready.
Good morning. Hey, man, what's up? Proud of you. Good, good to see you.
All right.
Here we go.
Picture time. Y'all smile.
Kevin, you want to get up here with us?
Sure.
And who, your other instructors? Whoever's with you, they need to get up here. Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, y'all can sit.
Yeah, y'all can sit down there. That's perfect.
There you go.
Just make sure the microphone's not pushing down a little bit.
Yeah.
All right. Count to three. One, two, three. And you get one more.
All smiles.
One, two, three.
All right. Good job, Gadsden. Keep up the good work. Kevin, thank you so much, and thanks for the invitation. We all need to drop by.
Oh, please do.
I really do. Thanks. All right, well, that is Agenda Item 7. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the recess.
All right. The Chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to reconvene.
All right, welcome back to the council meeting. We're now in session. We are at Item Number 10, which is unfinished business. We have none today. We'll move to Item 11. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3612 for solid waste transfer and disposal services. The purchasing agent has recommended awarding the bid to Meridian Waste Services, and the amount is $1,020,020. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution appointing member to Gadsden Airport Authority. This appoints Tina Gregerson for a term expiring July 31st, 2031. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution reappointing members to the Historic Preservation Board. This reappoints Grover Kitchens and Tyler Harrell for terms expiring September 11th, 2027, and Katherine Anderson and Dr. Sabrina Morgan for terms expiring September 11th, 2028. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Maybe we could change those expiration dates on those terms? Just?
Yeah, I was thinking those are interesting dates for expiration.
Sure it's coincidence, but...
Yeah. All right. Any other comments? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is new business. We have a couple of items today.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the first one I have is a resolution authorizing an amendment, number four, to an agreement that we have with Three Notch Group. This is an agreement that we have between the City of Gadsden and Three Notch for the design services for the realignment of South 11th Street. As we've talked about, this will cover the realignment, partial realignment and resurfacing in that last section of South 11th Street coming up the hill to Randall Street. So, this added some additional requirements that the state of Alabama has put in place for the completion of that project as far as environmental and road surface requirements. So, just to keep that project moving forward, if there's no objections, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the next one I have, Mr. President, is a resolution that comes to us from the Engineering Department. This is authorizing an agreement with an organization called Sports Facilities Development LLC. The total amount of this project is budgeted for $485,000. This is a group that will not only consult with us on the design and procurement of all of the equipment and multiple aspects of the new Gadsden Athletics Center. And I do want to make out point of order, there appears to be a typo on the resolution. This says, there's an extra S here, says Gadsden Athletics Center, and it's supposed to say Gadsden Athletics, so if y'all could clean that typo up. The $485,000 is, the actual agreement amount is $450,000, but it does allow for $35,000 in reimbursable expenses if they should occur in the process. Basically, this company has worked with thousands of other municipalities and communities on designing sports parks and sourcing and procurement the equipment that is placed in those parks and in those athletic facilities. So, essentially, what we're doing is we are paying these guys $450,000 plus a certain amount of potential expendables and reimbursed expenses to help us make the best possible decisions on purchasing the equipment for inside and outside of the sports athletic facilities in the Gadsden Athletics Center. The estimate of the agreement is that we're going to pay these guys a $450,000 fee to hold our hand through all of this purchasing and design process, and in exchange, it's anticipated that we will save $3.64 million in what we would have paid if we didn't have these guys helping us along the way. So, we're paying $450,000 in order to save $3.6 million is the best way to look at it. So, if there's no objections, as that project continues to barrel forward over there, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all we have today, Mr. President.
Thank you. That concludes Item Number 14. We're at the Item 15.
Do you still have chairs with me?
No.
You gave me your old chair. Just kidding. Give me the... I'm squeaking out here.
Is that what that noise is? Oh, no.
Let's stay focused, guys. We're almost there. Almost there. Almost to the finish line.
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
All right, we're at Agenda Item 15, believe it or not. It's department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any of those this morning? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen requests, which we already did. We moved that up earlier today, and just again, thank Kevin Blackwell and his staff at SPAN. What a great update that was, and it was very nice to see those students here this morning, changing their life and moving forward in a real positive way. So, that was nice. We're now at Item 17, is remarks by the mayor and council. Is there anything from the administration?
Just want to point out, it was a huge weekend in Gadsden last weekend, starting Saturday at, of course, District 7, Knocklila Falls. We had a huge trick-or-treat, record attendance there, record amount of candy given out, so we should have a lot of children on sugar highs this week. And then, transition to Saturday night, we had the MMA fights, sold-out crowd at the venue. That's always interesting. They have a huge crowd every time there's a fight there, and that's a good time had by everyone that's there. And last but not least, this Thursday, over on Wall Street, is Oktoberfest, starts at 5:00. We invite everyone to come out and enjoy the free festival and just watch the unveiling of the new sign at the Ritz Theater.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right, we will move to the council remarks. We'll start with Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Back. First thing I want to say is, just to commend Mr. Blackwell on his efforts and the efforts of his staff with the young people in doing everything that they can to really maximize the potential of all young people in that no child is left behind. You said something to second, third chances. What I do know is that things are different today for young people, and a lot of times, taking them, it's their environment that has caused them to be where they are, and so I commend them on their efforts for that. And so, we just hope that they continue to do great things with the young people. And I'm serious when I say this, I don't want Councilman Wilson to be offended about what I'm saying, because I am very serious. He really explained that last ordinance very well. Thank you.
Engineer.
That's all right.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilwoman.
He did. He put the last sentence so well. Thank you.
He did. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything today. Let's just keep moving forward with progress in the City of Gadsden. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, I want to make an announcement for Gadsden State Valley Street Campus. It's a timeout event Wednesday, October 15th, which is tomorrow, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. It's a fall, their fall tailgate event, which usually includes Gadsden Middle, Drumline, Gadsden State, show band, and a whole bunch of other things. I mean, food, Back Forty Company is included in this, student engagement, and the list goes on. And so, for those that are interested, pull up with your grills or just pull up and just kind of enjoy that event with Gadsden State. Again, this is an annual event that they put on every fall, and it's just a tailgate event, but it gives a lot of opportunity for student engagement and just to kind of see what that campus has to offer there as they continue to grow. I want to piggyback off something Ms. King referenced, too, and that was the Rage in the Cage event. One of my companies had the opportunity to participate in it. We sponsor, actually, an MMA fighter in MMA Fight Club, which is Jonathan Howard, and he didn't get to actually perform. I think he was the headliner, he didn't get to perform, because the guy that he was going to fight, I won't say chicken out, but he called out. And so, we're great to have that opportunity to also have that event here. Want to give a big shout out to Tom Bernard and the Blue Collar Fight Group. And then, I actually had the opportunity to meet one of my good buddies that we went to M. Sampson with, who is an artist, and hopefully, we can have conversations with the man that walked in the room in the back to get Mr. Clever here and to perform. So, great crowd. It was an awesome crowd, and for to be in a fight event, we didn't have any fights other than the ones in the ring. And it was also a great, a lot of kids was there, and it was just interesting. But I want to do, highlight this one fight, which was a jiu-jitsu fight, and the, one of those fighters was Death, but he is well-known in his tactical escape movements in being able to be pretty much an escape artist in grappling and holds. He did very well, lost at 20 seconds of his fight, but nevertheless, I just wanted to highlight that, that event and that art itself. Moving on, on October 28th, District 3 will be having its community meeting at Carver Community Center, and that will be held at 5:30 p.m. So, October 28th, 5:30 p.m. at the Carver Community Center. And the topics have been listed, so go and check that out. And then, final, final announcement on, I apologize here, on October 18th, Saturday, October 18th, at 11:00 a.m. at Carver Square, we will have a yoga and SIP sponsored by, of course, just the district itself, and then, with Raven VC. And then, we will have sponsors, The Candy Factory would be there, and then, Go Naked Juice would be someone that would be there as well. Two requirement things that we ask, well, three requirement things that we ask, that you bring your yoga mat, your yoga blocks, well, yoga mat, your journal, pen and journal, and then, the third thing we ask is an open mind. And so, we thank Raven VC for taking out her time and her talent to share with the community, just asking everyone, all, all, all across the city and the county to come out and experience this experience with us, outdoors, earthly event. And so, in this moment, we just want to kind of extend the opportunity for healthy life thousand principles. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President. I don't really have anything about city business, but I will take a point of privilege to say, first of all, good morning to everybody except for Kirby Smart and Ken Williamson and his officiating crew. And second of all, I want to take a point to say congratulations to President Donald Trump and his administration for brokering peace, this peace deal with Israel and Palestine, and returning those hostages. It was such a breath of fresh air to see members of both political parties congratulate him for that, all the way up and down. So, you know, Democrat, Republicans, I saw Hillary Clinton, Barack Obama, Gavin Newsom, these Democrats that would have typically disagreed with President Trump throughout his administration to genuinely and honestly and sincerely come out and congratulate him for this. It means so much. So many lives have been lost over there, and I pray, of course, like everybody, that this one sticks and that we can make it last. But that's something that's every president, basically, since Carter, has tried to pull off, and it's just amazing that those, all those hostages get to come home to their families after such a grueling experience. And it was moving, and the response by both sides to that happening was moving for me, and it has somewhat restored my faith that we can move forward as a country in a reasonable and, you know, logical way, and hopefully, work together for the best of everybody. So, congratulations. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra?
Thank you, President Back. I just want to remind everyone, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago. The City of Gadsden Schools and the Gadsden Public Library are going to host, one week from today, an event at the library on College Street, and it's called the After School Celebration. It's going to be held between 5:30 and 7:00. There'll be a lot of activities. I'm sure there will be a lot of food, but it's to focus on the after-school programs that are conducted by both the school system as well as the library, and it provides a lot of entertainment as well as education for all of our students. So, I just want to remind everyone, a week from today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minatra. Councilman Robinson?
I was really wanting to ask Councilman Avery if he's going to be part of that yoga he's got going on over there. Might come out and check that out. I'd say Larry in those yoga pants, you know what I mean?
I think he could do it, yeah.
And what are we sipping on? Are we sipping on the Go Naked Juice, or are we sipping on something else?
Yeah, I think he made it clear that there would be no alcohol involved in that.
Yeah, I don't have much. Just remind everybody about, it's Oktoberfest this Thursday, is right? This Thursday, looking forward to that. That's going to be a great event. Happy District 5 Day here in Gadsden for Mr. Wilson. Good job getting the Hickory Street Bridge finally paved and getting everything else done over there. It's awesome work. And then, you should be a professor somewhere. You'd be a good other teacher. If I'd had you as a high school teacher or a college teacher, I would have probably made straight A's, because he explains it just so well.
Another career.
I mean, he's nothing against...
Y'all may not have noticed my Auburn Brewing Science Program Professor's Lecture Shirt, Yeah, I think he made it clear that there would be no alcohol involved in that.
Yeah, I don't have much, just remind everybody about, it's Arttoberfest this Thursday, is right? This Thursday, looking forward to that, that's going to be a great event. Happy District 5 Day here in Gadsden for Mr. Wilson. Good job getting the Hickory Street Bridge finally paved and getting everything else done over there, it's awesome work. And then the, you should be a professor somewhere, you'd be a good teacher. If I'd had you as a high school teacher or a college teacher, I would have probably made straight A's because he explains it just so well.
Another career.
I mean, he's nothing against, he's nothing against how you're doing.
Y'all may not have noticed my Auburn Brewing Science Program Professor's Lecture Shirt, but I mean, that's coincidence.
It's funny, I've known you for a long time, you've never taught me anything about brewing beer.
Let's don't get started talking about things that we haven't told each other, Councilman Robinson.
Anyway, that's about all I have to say. Just with Councilman Smith driving down here today and just driving around the city in general, everything looks great, everything's clean, it's, there's cranes up in the air, there's construction going on, there's dirt being moved. I'm happy to be a part of it, glad to be a part of the situation, glad to be in the same room making these decisions, and I hope everybody's happy with what we're doing. If you're not, then, I don't know, give us a ring and tell us how bad you feel about it, but I don't want to say how you can, but I'm sure there are some people that do. But anyway, that's all I got to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. It has been a good day in Gadsden, a good day of government, as Councilman Smith often says. I do want to remind everyone that this Sunday at Forest Cemetery at 2:00 is the walk-through time. Our own Michael Rogers is the leader of that group right now, and Michael, thank you. It's 2:00 to 5:00 or 2:00 to 4:00?
2:00 to 4:30.
2:00 to 4:30.
If it doesn't rain.
Yeah, if it doesn't rain. Everybody keep your fingers crossed. That's outstanding history of Gadsden. If you haven't had a chance to participate in that or to watch it or to go, it's really interesting. It talks about, there's people that are reenacting people that are buried at Forest Cemetery, and it's a history of our county, really, and our city. It's very educational, and you learn something every year. So we have some new actors this year, and so there'll be new information. I'll be, I portray Hoyt Butler of Call Your Butler Funeral Home, so if I see you, and if I'm in character, so you can call me Mr. Butler at that point, I guess, that's, but he has a great story. Fought in the Battle of the Argon Forest in World War I, was the police chief and the coroner here in Gadsden, held many different jobs, and, but was, and then, of course, with his best friend, Bob Collier, started, began Call Your Butler Funeral Home in 1943 that's still going today. So a lot of history, and it's for a good cause. The money that is raised there goes back into the cemetery. Some of the things they've done with that money, or we've done, is put, repair the roof on that one-of-a-kind structure, the chapel. If you ever have been there, that's an amazing structure, inside and outside. Most recently, handrails were installed all throughout the cemetery. There's certain areas where you have to go up and down some steps, and it was noted that there weren't any handrails, a safety issue, so now there are handrails in certain spots that were very much needed. So that's the walk-through time at Forest Cemetery this Sunday, 2:00 through 4:30. And I believe that that is all that I have for today, if everybody else is. We have one more?
Mr. Butler, I'd just like to approach you about possibly, the city possibly acquiring that prime piece of riverfront property you have your facility built on. Thank you.
Yeah, sold. Yeah, sold. All right, that's, all right, y'all. We have a, we tend to have a lot of fun up here, but it's, but it's all for a good reason. And we have had a good day here and want to wish everybody a good week, enjoy this weather, and we will be back here next Tuesday. We are adjourned.